Hi Janet. Oh, that's better.
Hello, everybody.
Rosemary.
Hi, how are you doing? On time, no see.
Yeah, it's been a while since we met.
Yeah, I can't believe how fast two months has gone since I've seen all of you.
I know it. It's going by fast.
That's right. And you've all done your anti-rain dances, yes?
Yeah.
Well, it's not a weekend, so it doesn't have to be.
Hi Wendy.
I signed my husband and I up for babysitting our niece, one of our nieces and nephews tonight. And I forgot we had planning commission, so if you hear little ones busy in the background babysitting, so.
I love the sound of little children, so it's all fine with me.
He just comes in, why are you talking?
How old are they?
Hi, Raylene.
Hi.
These two are three and six, so.
Oh goodness, well, you'll be busy.
Yeah.
Yeah, my youngest grandson is three. And I'll be honest, I don't mind it when he goes home with mom and dad. He's a busy little man.
Yeah, but the difference with grandma and mother is if you smell a smelly diaper, you can say here. Well, it is 5:30 and we have a quorum, but why don't we wait another minute or two and see if a couple more members might show up.
There enough.
There's Becky.
There you go, there's Becky. Hi Becky.
Hi Becky.
Two, three, four, right? Raylene?
We, you know, we have five.
Yep.
We have a quorum and I think, I don't know if you'd heard from, from Joe or Caitlin.
I have not, so I'm, I'm hoping they're gonna be jumping on any minute, but I can, if you want to get started, I'm happy to take minutes until such time as maybe Joe joins us.
Okay, well, why don't we wait another minute?
Okay.
The train whistle behind. Probably Janet hears it too.
I actually don't hear it at all, right? Well, when it does go by, yes.
I hear it a lot.
There was one just blowing the whistle now.
Yeah.
Don't hear it right now, but I usually do during the day if I'm homeworking.
Okay, so why don't we get started? So we'll call the meeting of the June 12th planning commission.
There's Joe.
To order. Yep, and maybe Caitlin will, will come on sometimes, she's in the midst of other things with work, so she sometimes isn't right on. So the first item on the agenda is adjustments to the agenda. Does anybody have anything they want to add or move in the agenda? If not, we have public comment. And we don't have any of the public except for us here, so we can pass by that.
Yes, and there's no one in the room with me.
Okay. And next item is approval of the minutes from the, is it the March 13th meeting?
Yes.
Does anybody have, want to make a motion to approve those minutes?
Oh, to approve the minutes.
Okay.
And I'll second.
Okay, Becky's moved and Raylene has seconded. Are there any adjustments to the, to the minutes? Or are we ready, are we ready to vote? Okay, so all in favor of approving the minutes, say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
So the minutes have been approved. I don't think there's any old business that I'm aware of. Is there anything anybody has to bring up? I think maybe during staff report time, there'll be a few things to chat about, but why don't we move on to new business? And we've got talking about the Berry municipal plan. And I asked Janet to put this on the agenda. It seems like it's a long time till the current plan runs out because it's, was adopted in, in September of 2020. And it could remain until September of 2028. But I thought we should bring up the, the subject for a few reasons. One is time flies by and the process of updating the plan takes a while. And particularly if we're going to get a help from a consultant, we have to be able to fund that and, and go through a process to find a consultant. My other couple of thoughts are, one, the last time we did the city plan, it was really an update of the prior one. And I'm kind of thinking to myself that maybe this should be a complete and total rewrite. And a few reasons for that is since that plan was adopted, there was a COVID period. We have had a couple major floods which have changed the orientation and thinking about things that the city's doing. And we also have, we had a housing challenge before, it's much, much greater now. So those are some things that I'm hoping would be addressed in the city plan and, and you know, that are, and things that have changed. And there's no rule that says we can't go through a city planning process and adopt a plan before the expiration date of the old one. So if we went through the planning process and all, and it took two years, and we had a good plan to bring the city council that, you know, addressed some of those things, and I'm sure there are other things that would come up. There would be no reason not to do that. So that's why I asked to have it on the agenda. But would be glad to hear from other folks about what you think. And Janet provided some material about process and things we can do to get a plan going. But would certainly love to hear from other commissioners about if this makes sense to start now? If there are things we should be thinking about in terms of other issues, major items to address in, in the plan that, that weren't in the previous one? And also maybe any thoughts about process? So I'll open the floor up if anyone else wants to add something.
I think from the timeline you laid out, I think it makes sense to start talking about it for sure. Because you're right, time does fly by quickly. So I think that makes sense to start the process. Do we always, I know you mentioned, we, was it last time there was a consultant? Or is there always a consultant that gets hired? Or how does that typically work?
Well, we have used a consultant and I'm going to let Janet jump in at least the last time, and I think maybe the time, other times as well. But particularly it's a challenge because Janet's doing a lot of stuff. So it also just helps in terms of going through process and getting things done. But maybe Janet would like to speak to that as well.
Sure, happy to. David hit the nail on the head. It's, it's not only about my capacity, but a municipal plan is a heavy lift. And we did an update to a current plan that was done by a consultant in 2014. It really takes somebody who's aware of, gosh, I think there are 14 or 15 requirements we need to meet and deliberate over and discuss and how our plan is molded and shaped against the state's requirements. And I think it, it serves us best to have an expert come in and guide us through that process. You know, for me, not only am I participatory, but I'm also there to, you know, assist in, in, in a higher capacity. But I think we would best be served by a whole, like David said, a whole new plan, a refresh. We have the opportunity to change our theme if we want. If we want to keep it the same, is it, is it still going to be health related? Those are the things that we can start thinking about now. I mean, what do you as a commission think about? As David said, so much has changed, not only in the last two years, but in the last almost 10 years.
Anyone else have thoughts? Rosemary?
I'm just wondering, who would this person be, Janet? I mean, the consultant, that is. Do we have access to one easily? Or is this something we have to put out? To bid, or?
It's the latter of what you just said. We, we'd be best served by putting out an RFP.
Yeah.
And finding somebody. And ACCD lists consultants on their website. It's so help, their website is so helpful in, you know, being able to reach out to a large pool of, you know, these folks do this and these folks do this kind of thing. So it will definitely be an RFP process. I think, because, only because I think it's going to be something that's going to cost us at least $25,000 in consultant fees to get done. And the city's procurement policy is such that if you're going to spend $25,000 or more, you have to go through the RFP process.
Are there funds available? Or are we going to need to apply for grants? Which also, you know, takes some time if there's a desire or hope to get some, some state funding. I know the last time we did it, we got a grant.
Right.
And that, you know, makes a big difference certainly to the city.
Yes, it does. So we have access to what I believe is $20,000. I need to work, Encore Energy out on Allen Street is willing to donate some money to the city, like they've donated money to the school. And I need to work with the folks from Encore to tell them, they want to know what the $20,000 would be spent on. And so I need to work on that. I also have a budget line in planning and zoning's budget alone for consultants. So I'm really hoping that if, if we want to move relatively quickly, say this fall, I have access to funds already and might not have to worry about any kind of grant process. Furthermore, ACCD has changed their policies on when you apply. They don't always have rolling dates. They've always had certain dates you apply by. But they have now a pre-application process which comes with deadline dates. So if you don't get a pre-application in to tee them up, you cannot apply under the grant full process. So there is that.
It might be helpful, if you don't know now, by the next meeting anyhow, have some timeline of if we did want to apply for grants, what would the earliest time to hop into that process be? And what would the earliest time we might have a grant awarded be?
Okay.
One of the challenges I think that we've had with grants sometimes is when the state issues grants, then, then all of a sudden, all these different planning commissions and folks are looking for the same consultants. And it can be a challenge because they, they get more requests than they can handle. Yeah, Wendy?
You just had a question. I do have a thought about a theme. But what I was wondering is, would it be helpful before we put the RFP out to, to kind of talk about the theme and decide what we want? So that like there may be some consultants who are more experienced in that kind of thing? Depending on what it is, or does it matter?
Well, I think, yeah, I think we're a little early to be starting to find a consultant. So I agree, we should talk about a theme and the broader prospects. I'm also, again, thinking out loud that maybe we, we would do well to, for example, set up a time to go to a city council meeting and chat with them about what sorts of things do you think should be addressed in the city plan? What are, what sorts of themes do you think there should be? Maybe we should be talking to some other city committees that deal with some of the things that are addressed in the plan. Maybe we should be talking to Berry Area Development. Maybe we should be talking to the Berry Partnership. Maybe we should be talking to some of the housing organizations. Maybe we should be chatting with school officials right up front to just try to get a lay of the land. So before we, we really dive in and start doing anything, we kind of find, find some focus groups, so to speak, to just get some perspective and input and what, what do people think is important? And, and also maybe tee them up for later in the process, being interested in what's being developed.
I think that's a good idea.
Anyone else have thoughts? Or do these things sound like reasonable things going forward? You know, I think if, if the planning commission is going to be, if we are going to be talking to groups, that's going to mean that commissioners are going to have to be willing to attend some meetings with these sorts of folks. I mean, sometimes we can invite them to a planning commission meeting. But sometimes we might be better off getting on their agenda and kind of forcing them to listen. So those are some of my thoughts. So next steps. Anybody have ideas? I can, I can offer some because I've been thinking about this for a while. But what my suggestion would be is that maybe Janet and I can sit down and draft some kind of really rudimentary work plan for how we want to go about doing this and how long we think things might take. And if there's a state grant process to try to tailor some of the pre-work we do to how that grant process might work? Does that sound like a reasonable place to start?
It does.
Yeah, seeing heads nodding.
Yeah, that makes sense. Yeah, thanks David for thinking about this.
I'm good with that as well.
Okay. So Janet, we got some work to do.
Sure we do. Don't we always?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
No, well, I think, I think we can pretty quickly sit down and, and map out some ideas and thoughts and, and timelines. So is there anything else about the municipal plan? If not, the next item is the proposed Wabi Block Park, proposed Wabi Park subdivision. And that's the property that's next door to the Public Safety Building. And you had some, some things in your, your packet to take a look at. So I'll turn it over to Janet.
Thank you, David. Yeah, this actually came about relatively quickly. It's something the city's been working on for a while, but I was in a planning meeting with Downstreet and their architect. And we got to talking about lot sizes and it came right when I was putting the agenda together. So what I think is a very fortuitous time to, to have this discussion. The city put out a letter of interest to build housing on the parcel, part of the parcel that is this, this whole parcel is obviously where the Public Safety Building is. And this section right through here has been designated as, we call it Wabi Park. The Wabi family is involved with it. The Berry, there is a, there's called a Berry Basketball Committee from the 70s that actually keeps up their, their business name. So we're dealing with, how do we turn this into housing? And Downstreet answered the call to the letter of interest. And so working on this subdivision, we're trying to figure out where the four lots are going to go. And I said, but this is a civic, civic zoned parcel. So we're going to have to do something with its zoning designation. I don't, we, we cannot leave it civic because eventually the city will sell the land to Downstreet and they will develop it. So it won't, it won't truly be city owned, it won't be a civic parcel. So that being said, the plan is for this area to have four single-family homes. And I included in your packet a couple of the architectural renderings. Let me get to those. I thought I had it open. Bear with me. I think I have to do this. And then I have to, oh, I've had it open. This, from your packet, I'm, I'm doing my best to put it on the screen for you. This represents, what I said at the top was, if we continue the R16 zoning district over onto what is the, going to be the subdivision. R16 has a minimum lot size of 8,712 square feet with 16-foot setbacks all the way around. And so you can see, for example, I don't know if you, can you see my mouse moving, everybody?
I can see it.
Thank you, Wendy. This represents what could be the subdivision with 8,700, a minimum of 8,712 square feet and with a building envelope. You'll see the dash line inside, that's what 16 feet are. My concern when I went to this planning meeting was, you're really essentially going to lose what is, we call Fifth Street. The, when the Public Safety Building was built, they were supposed to come in on Fourth Street and exit on Fifth Street. And if you get rid of Fifth Street, what happens is residential traffic and public safety traffic all flows in front of the Public Safety Building. So I said to them, what would it look like if we did it? I think I said MU1, right?
Uh, UC.
UC3. So if you, if you remember from the, if you look at your zoning map, we have an opportunity to either change the whole entire area like Sixth Street and those other areas from our four to something else and help with housing. Or, so to speak, move a zoning line that will allow and cover four single-family homes. The problem with UC3 is, as I said in my packet, one and two family homes are not allowed. So we've got some work to do to figure out and think about that area down there. Do we want to change it from our four to say our 12? Do we want to just move the zoning district line over? So our four extends into where these four lots will be? Do we extend UC3 up off North Main Street? And then also change some, there's quite literally a, in our use table, it says a P with a one, and that one means it comes with having to follow the other standards. And so UC3 with that P1 means, and that's where I saw, single-family homes are not allowed. So I think the best thing to do is now that you've heard what is the project and what could happen, we start thinking and talking about what it is that we want to do in this area. Because this project is probably going to get built next year. They're going to want to come in front of the DRB likely this fall for their subdivision. And what they can do is do a subdivision approval and any other development approvals they may need at the time. If, if we figure out the zoning beforehand, they won't need to come in front of the DRB. But single-family homes in the UC3 zoning district are not allowed. So. And I don't mean to keep repeating myself by any means. So let me get back to this. We've got our four that goes all the way up and around and up Beckley, up and, up towards Berry Town. Our, our highest residential zoning district, right? UC3 flanks North Main Street. And then our 12 is over here and works its way up in another direction.
Can I ask a question? What is the minimum, is, what is, if we, if that, if these lots were changed to our 12, what would that do to the lot size? And, and feasibility of putting single-family on them?
Right, so single-family homes are allowed in our 12. And I, I didn't get the architect in, to have that, that third scenario for you, David. So I'm glad you asked the question. Our 12 minimum lot size, I think is 3,000 or 4,000 square feet.
Well, that would solve the problem.
It would solve the problem. And I think we could still get a sizable home on the lot. But, yeah, 4,000 square feet and one dwelling unit for every 3,600 square feet. So that would allow for ample room, ample, four lots not being into Fifth Street like this and losing so much of this drive.
Yeah.
And I think, like I said, still allowing for a reasonably good-sized home. And maybe even different driveway considerations. But those would come with plans. Really, it's, it's about the lot layout and what it is that we see in this area.
Yeah, my biggest concern with, with the R4 is it basically removes an access from the Public Safety Building. As far, at least as far as I'm kind of trying to look at it and understand it.
Yeah, that was my concern when we had this meeting and I saw this plan. That's why I asked them to do this one. And then, like I said, I didn't get a drawing to see what, if we went with our 12. Because really, any of the residential zoning districts Because really, any of the residential zoning districts work. It's just, we don't want it to appear as if we're spot zoning for the sake of this singular subdivision. We have to think about it, big picture.
Okay, so, so looking at the building, uh, the old school behind the Public Safety Building. That zoned our four, what is that being used for?
That is a 12-unit apartment building.
So shouldn't that actually be our 12?
Good point.
And then haven't we sort of solved the spot zoning question?
If we can change some of this. Yes, I believe so. It would be. If we do our 12 up here and then a little bit right there, I don't think it would. I think it would be acceptable.
And, and I don't know about the next two properties up from the old school. Are those single families or are those something different?
Um, I would have to look at the map, so if you, do you, um, if you bear with.
And my thought is that, that we can have, it could be our 12 and, and be contiguous to our 12 if we change, pretty much change that parcel as well.
Right.
It might even allow for more development on that parcel.
Yeah, so you're talking about up here, yes, David?
Yeah, the ones right, yeah, those two.
I can't read that far away, I apologize. Is that, what's the description for this parcel? Oh, right there. Single-family home. Single-family home. And then this one is the old school.
Right.
What if we even did like a, seems like if you do that, it's leaving that, right, can you go over a little bit? To the left of, um, where the school, the yellow, yeah.
Sure, 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 sorry.
Oh no, where you were, sorry. Cause if, if those, uh, properties would be proposed in that area by Fifth Street. Then it kinda leaves that weird triangle. What if we, we zone to do like, an L shape of. Our 12 around the civic zone, do you know what I mean? And then it could leave room for a future development. Looks like there's just a bunch of trees there. But maybe I'm seeing that wrong. Hard to see on the map. If you were to take your mouse from the school, the old school.
Yep.
And draw it up through that triangle. And then go left where those houses would be proposed.
Right here.
Yeah, would that be weird to do that in L shape like that? And I just can't see, are we, would we ever utilize that, that triangle area for anything?
This is really steep, so that will likely, Wendy, always stay with the Public Safety Building parcel. Good question, though.
Yeah, I didn't realize that was supposed to be right there.
But the R12 for where the school is, the land, I guess, would it be to the north of it? That sort of piece above next to the, next to the triangle on the, on the, is that developable?
Over here off Sixth Street?
No, where the, where the old school theory, that, that piece.
Two, it's right there.
Let me move you out of the way.
It almost looks like there's a road back there, but I can't.
So it's real steep right through here. What the Public Safety Building folks are going to do is make an emergency access road from, they call this the Sally Port. It's like a garage area for the police cars and they want to, cause there's a trash rack up here. Go up this bank and to be able to get out i-if and when North Main Street floods. So, like I said, this will likely stay with the city's parcel, but this bank is really steep.
Yeah.
And is this developable? Likely. Boy, likely not, but over here where the lots get bigger, this is nice area. And this is being worked on for future development.
So anyhow, I think there's possibilities.
Yeah, I think there's always possibilities.
My, my other question is, is there a particular reason why those four lots are being looked at for single-family? Is that because that's what the city asked for or is that because that's what Downstreet came up with?
That's, uh, that's Downstreet's suggestion.
Okay.
Yeah, David, that was one of my questions is why, why single-family and is there potential for multifamily there?
Well, multifamily or even duplexes.
Yeah.
You know, even duplexes that are separately owned.
I can ask the question, um, of Nicholas, but I think, I think it's Downstreet's desire and what they want to do with the property. I think that's how they reacted to the, um, letter of interest.
Okay. It might be worth chatting with Downs, if, if they're the ones who decided, it might be worth chatting with them to see if what they're proposing is what they thought. Would be acceptable to the city or if what they propose is what they think is the best use of that space.
Maybe it would seem that conversation would be worthwhile if nothing else.
Yeah.
Yeah, and like I said, it may have already happened and I don't know the answer to that.
And just in case folks. Don't remember, I think we maybe talked before, my understanding is that, that the Wabi family is, is willing to. To basically give up that space because there would be space for a Wabi Park somewhere else in the North End. Maybe in some of the areas that are being bought out or whatever.
Right. Yeah, there has to be a swap. I believe that's what the Wabi family is working with the city manager on.
Yeah, that was my understanding is that that's, that would, that would happen so that there would still be a Wabi Park, it just wouldn't be there. But it would be somewhere in the North End.
So I think my question to you folks is. If the answer is for single-family homes and that's what they want to do. Does making this our 12 make more sense?
Well, our 12 doesn't preclude having single-family homes, so it's whatever the owner decides to do. It gives Downstreet more choices.
Right.
But I think that makes more sense than the R4 where the lot size is going to be a problem.
I would agree with that.
Yeah, I think our 12 also.
And I think if the old school, the fat lot became our 12. That would make it pretty clear, it's not really spot zoning, it's just this triangle of city land in between. It's sort of a weird thing anyhow.
Mm-hmm.
Or we could draw the line through it and say it's our 12, but it'll never be developed. But it would be a zoning line that doesn't follow a lot line.
Right, which, uh, we kind of frowned on that.
That's what I thought.
Yeah. I think drawing it too hard.
Raylene has her hand up.
Yeah, I just, I don't know, I'm curious when we're looking at this or even talking with Downstreet or anybody really. Has anybody brought up alternative-type housing at all? Like, having more than just four units? Because you could possibly put some tiny homes or other homes that are affordable. And even helpful to older people that maybe want to downsize and, and people that are looking. Maybe there's single people that want to get into a tiny home. I know families that live in them. But I, I just, are we trapped into? Just these, these lots and these four homes?
If, if I may, um, I think really what we need to be focusing in on is. Changing the zoning district for the ability to have residential of some kind. Not necessarily convincing them to do something different just because that's the plan at the moment. Um, it's more about, our job is to show, making it easier for housing to occur. And this happens to be an area where somebody wants to sell a piece of land to somebody else for development. And right now, single-family homes aren't allowed, single-family and two-family are not allowed.
Right. But if changing it to the 12, maybe there could be a broader discussion about the possibilities there.
I think anybody could approach Downstreet and say. Why is your intention, like I said, maybe this is already done. Maybe they want to do small footprint homes. 220 square feet between 220 and say 600, does a pretty small house and get more in there. I don't know that we should be. My opinion is we shouldn't be bound by looking at zoning just because we know of the specific use. We need to maybe look at it from a broader sense, that a subdivision is going to occur. And how do we, can we accommodate our zoning to allow for residential in this area?
I agree.
Yeah. Well, I mean, it makes sense to me to kind of. Put it back to the city manager or Downstreet or whoever is having those discussions. And say that the planning commission is wondering if an R12 might be a better designation, partly because of the slot size. And whether that might change the thoughts of Downstreet or the, or the city. Kind of see is there a reason why single-family is, is what's there? It might be that that's what the city council had in mind and it might not be.
Right.
Would be worth pushing that discussion to whoever the, you know, appropriate parties are.
Sure.
Any other thoughts, anyone? Okay, so, I guess if not, we could move on in the agenda. Janet, do you have what you need from this discussion?
I do, I'm gonna have all kinds of stuff, um, to help further this conversation for our next meeting.
Okay, excellent. So, next item is, uh, our next meeting date is scheduled for July 10.
Yes, um, it's the week after 4th of July. I'm actually gonna be gone, uh, on vacation that week. And I didn't know if anyone else was taking time off and perhaps our fourth Thursday might be a better accommodation. So I'm just putting that out to everybody regardless of what was put on the agenda, so. And go for a special meeting versus our regular meeting.
I can do the fourth Thursday, I mean, I would rather, I feel like it's a scary day to do anything, always now, so. First work for me.
Yeah, well, for me, the fourth Thursday would be preferable.
Same here.
That would be the 24th?
Okay, thank you for looking that up, okay.
Um, yeah, I'm fine with either one, so whatever is best for everyone is fine with me.
Okay. Well, great, thank you, I appreciate you all making that accommodation. Not only for yourselves, but for me.
Okay.
No problem.
Is it the 24th then you said?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, um, our next item. Is staff updates. And you provided, uh, staff update for us. I don't know if anybody has questions. I did have a question about your, your, um. I guess it would be the third to the last bullet that says the three HMGP applications completed by SLR consultants. Can you translate that for me?
Sure, I'm sorry about that. Those are the three, um, the Done by the River program, they're the consultants that have been reporting directly to city council. That's the Berlin Street Bridge area, the Willie Street Bridge area and the Harrington Avenue area. That the, they put forth, uh, applications, uh, to seek funding to help with flood mitigation. Willie Street, the, the two bridges have been under discussion. Lots of discussion going on at the city council level. But I just wanted to brief you folks on where they fell in their process. And how two are being advanced and the one I really thought was gonna get advanced didn't. So we'll have to wait for another, another opportunity. If you recall, over at the Harrington area, we already have that trash rack. And back in 2017, 2015, 2017, we took down five homes over there. And created a floodplain area which was decimated again in, uh, 2023 and 2024. So, uh, SLR consultants, taking into account almost all of the homes being removed in the buyout process. And expanding the floodplain, putting in a couple other trash racks. I know that the, um, the plans have been shared at the city level and I can always get those folks out, those plans out to you if you guys want to see them. If you haven't been tracking this progress at the city council level. But that bullet is there just to remind you and let you know that two of the three projects have gotten advancement, that's all.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And my other question, as you said, permitting has been very busy. Have there been permits for, um, ADUs or, or dwelling units or is it mostly just, um, home improvement sorts of things?
It's mostly home improvement. Yeah, um, we've got one ADU permitted and under construction now. I think the last time we talked about this probably was six months or better. People look at it and it turns into a, um, can they afford it kind of thing? In the past, we've seen conversions of second-floor garages into ADUs. But I haven't, I could, I could have that prepared for you for next, but I don't think we've had any new ADU permitting. And if we have, it's been one or two at best.
Yeah, just cause it's, you know, you, I mean, the zoning change means it doesn't really even have to be an ADU per se.
Right.
But, but, um, seems like there's an opportunity and see, we're seeing, I think. Kind of, I'm seeing a lot of it in some other communities, but it hasn't found its way to Berry and I suspect it's a cost benefit.
I, I suspect the same, David, I agree.
If you build one in Chittenden County, you can rent it for $2,400 a month.
Right.
And if you build one in Berry, you can't rent it for $2,400 a month. So, that makes a big difference in whether somebody's willing to invest. I know that because my son's been looking for a place to live in Chittenden County.
Ah.
So he knows what those are going for, so I hear about that. Does anyone else have any questions for Janet?
I don't have a question, I just wanted to commend Janet on the, um, downtown master plan meetings and that process with the consultant. I thought that was really well done. They were so engaging and encouraging of the community members who showed up to those meetings. At least the ones that I was at, uh, and I'm really looking forward to seeing what they put together for us. They seem to have some just really great ideas, so thank you Janet for. I know that was kind of like a connecting in with other groups to make that happen and it came together really fast, but, um, I thought it was really great.
It was great and we got. It was great, and we got great, uh, ideas out of the folks that attended. Um, and, and the way they view the downtown and can we reroute traffic off of North Main Street and things like that. It was refreshing to hear those other points of view. So the team that you met, any of you that came, the team that you met, um, one of them, uh, they returned to their respective states and one of them, uh, took a job elsewhere. So it has slowed down their lookbook process. Um, they're still working on it because they're billing us. So, uh, I can't wait to see a draft also, Becky, so thank you.
Thank you, anyone else have questions?
Um, I, I have something if no one else does.
Okay, yeah.
I just wanted to let the folks know that, um, Michelle Labarge Burke, who works for me as our permit administrator, has accepted a job as the city's rec director. Rec, I, I guess it's a rec manager. Um, so she's, she'll be gone on July 1. Uh, and Nicholas is going to make that announcement at city council on Tuesday night. Um, but I wanted to share that with you. So some of you folks have contacts with lots of other professionals. And if you know of somebody who's going to maybe look for a job and wants to come do zoning, it's not easy by any means, but, um, you know, put it out on the airwaves here pretty quick, I'd appreciate that.
Yeah, so congratulations to her and I'm sorry, Janet.
Yeah, me too. Um, I think this, the city has scored a phenomenal person to work on programming and really pick recreation up by its bootstraps and do some great things with it. So, you guys lucked out.
Hey, anyone else on the, uh, staff updates? Okay, if not, we are at roundtable. So do any commissioners have anything they want to chat about? I can start if you want. Um, so Becky, this is your last meeting on the planning commission. So I wanted to, number one, make sure everybody knew that. But also, thank you for, uh, the service you've done and, and I know you've got other things going on. Um, but we really appreciate the time and insights and, and efforts you made to help the planning commission. So thank you, Becky.
Yeah, thanks, David. It's been, it's been a pleasure. And, uh, I'll definitely be keeping in touch on the planning, uh, front. The master plan, downtown master plan particularly has piqued my interest, so, yeah.
Okay, great.
Thanks, Becky.
And the other thing I wanted to mention is that our July meeting will be, well, I mentioned two things. One is, uh, I was reappointed to the planning commission, so you got me for three more years. Uh, but there is a vacancy now on the planning commission. So if any of you know folks who might be interested in, in serving, certainly you can promote, promote it and tell them they'll get on the ground floor and, um, working on the next city plan.
Yeah, thank you for saying that. There'll, there'll be two vacancies once Becky leaves us.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, that's, I, I don't know if you all realized you're a seven-member board, so we've been limping along with a, with an open seat.
Okay, well, two seats then. So all the more reason to, uh, see if there's anyone who's interested. Uh, the other thing I would mention is that the July meeting would be our organizational meeting for the year. So we will need to, um, elect a chair and a vice chair. And do we elect a secretary or is that kind of appointed?
Uh, all three positions, uh, you choose.
Okay, uh, and I would like to suggest if anybody would really like to be the chair, I would be more than happy to, um, to give them the opportunity. If nobody wants to do it, I can keep doing it, but I would be just as happy if somebody else wanted to give it a shot. So, that's my roundtable stuff. Does anyone else have something? Well, we don't have anything else, uh, then we could have a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, Wendy's moved, we adjourn, is there a second?
I second.
Okay, Rosemary seconded. So, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and any opposed? I think we are now adjourned, so we get to enjoy the nice weather.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Happy Fourth of July. Becky, I still owe you, oh, she's gone, I owe Becky some information. So thank you, everyone.
Thanks, everyone.
Bye, Janet, thank you.
You're welcome.